I call this regular city council meeting to order on January 13th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. We have a full quorum, and if you'll join me, we'll be led in our invitation by Pastor Beverly Kelling from St. Paul Lutheran Church.
Well, Happy New Year, everyone. If y'all will join me in prayer. Oh heavenly and holy Father, Lord, we come to you because all good things come from you. Father, we thank you for the work and the service that has been provided over this past year. And Fathers, as we enter into this new year, Lord, we always ask for wisdom, we ask for discernment. We ask, Father, that you would protect all the workers of this community, and we would ask you, Father, that we would grow in a way that honors you, and that we would grow in a way that grows businesses, and this would be a destination for many to want to come to. Father, we pray for the family of Joe Ainsworth, the former chief of police here. Father, would you give them a peace and a calm? We pray, Father, as well, for those that are enduring currently the fires in California, Lord, not only those who have lost their homes, Lord, but the firefighters and all the workers that are trying to contain it. And Father, if you would show your mercy and grant some rain, or at least help those winds to die down, Father, you would receive all the glory on that. We also continue to pray for those, Father, that last year were affected by the hurricanes. What it is mindful of, Fathers, that your power is awesome and great, and so, Father, I pray that as we come to you, that we would do things that honor you, that we would fear you in a way versus man and what the pressures that we put on ourselves, Lord. We ask you to bless this council, bless their families, bless all the service workers here in this community, Father, and bless all the families. We love you, Lord, we trust you, and we are your community, and it's in Jesus' cross name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Join me with Senator Billie Leagence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May you see it. Item number five in our agenda is citizens' public comments. Persons who desire to address the City of Hondo City Council will be received at this time, and those persons wishing to speak should complete a public comment form and submit it to the city secretary prior to the meeting. If the speaker wishes to comment on a particular agenda item, then the speaker should indicate such items on the form. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Speakers must conduct themselves in a civil manner. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City of Hondo City Council cannot deliberate or take action on items not listed on the meeting agenda. We have two who have signed up to speak at citizens' comments. The first is Ms. Floristella Gonzalez.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I'm here to ask, maybe I can get an answer from somebody later on. I know y'all can't answer me right now. I had called the supervisor for the animal care services, and I had asked a question about when was the next Spain neuter, and well, she answered me, and then I asked another question. I'm concerned because it says, I said, "Just concerned on your wording of animal control is not animal care services anymore." It was amended a few years ago when Kim Davis was here, and it was for, because it was animal control on the trucks, and that's what they would use, animal control. We spoke to her, and she agreed. It's more humane to use animal care services, and yet it is worded, when I'm asked, I ask a question, it's worded as animal control. Well, that's why it was amended, to use animal care services. And if you call to the shelter, they will say animal control. It's more humane to use animal care services. Animal control is like, you know, getting rid of the animal and not helping it or adopting it or anything. And besides, like I said, it was passed, the council passed it, Kim Davis and Mayor Danner is, it passed, so that's just a question on that, that why is that being used if it was amended? And the other one was on the advisory board, I'm here again, I came last year about twice, and I'm here again, I haven't heard anything on the animal care services advisory board. Is there any word? Chavel sent an email to the city manager, and he said, I think the mayor was supposed to talk to some members or board members. Is, my question is, it still hasn't been, you haven't gotten board members or anything? To me, it's like we said, it's just as important, there's even, there's a board for the Blue Santa, there's a board for the cemetery, for the golf, economic, there's a board for everything. This is important, too, they're living, breathing creatures, and for the betterment of these animals, we need an advisory board. And last time after that I brought it up, I spoke to the mayor, and I was told something about the population or something. Well, on this paper where it says on state law, it doesn't say anything about the population. It says, "Section 823.005 Advisory Committee, the governing body of a county or municipality in which an animal shelter is located, shall appoint an advisory committee to assist in complying with the requirements of the chapter." And then it goes on and on about how many members and all that, so I'm just concerned. This is just as important as Blue Santa Board. These, like I, I'll repeat myself again, these are living, breathing creatures, and I think for the betterment of these animals, it's very important to have one. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. We have another to speak, Mr. Chavel Lopez.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Chavel Lopez. I reside at 1002 Avenue S, and I'm here today to talk about the city recycling. It was about six years ago, we had, we struggled with the council, you know, when they shut down the recycling over here that the city had, that place over here by the animal shelter. They closed it down, and they, now they moved it over to where the old, no, where Precinct One is, the Precinct One County Commissioner is. And so, six years ago, we struggled with that, and I'm here because I want to know, like, how many departments here in the city recycle, you know? I know that the library recycles, it's important, you know, that we recycle, and it's important that the city educate the employees on the importance of recycling because of the pollution that we have and the climate crisis that we have right now. You know, we're in a serious drought, you know, fires in California, you know, floods in other parts of the world, so we need to take care of our planet, or else we're not going to have, you know, a planet for our children to live in. So it's important to educate our employees, and also, you know, if the city, if the mayor, some, one of you city councilmen or city councilwoman, you know, get back with me and research, you know, how many of the departments, you know, recycle. I know that here, we, right here where the administration office is, where the city manager is, the other day, we were walking, and we just went by there, and we looked inside the bin, and there's a bunch of cardboard and plastic bottles and all that, you know, that's being thrown away, it's just in the bin, it's not in a recycling bin. So I think the city could afford, you know, an employee or two on Saturdays, because you got to take your recycling on Saturdays, it's open between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM, and they could collect from the different departments and take the recycling over to the recycling area over there where it's at, at Precinct One. I think it's important, you know? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Item number six is to present the Hondo Police Department's 2024 Officer of the Year.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I've got some I want to read real quick about Officer Lopez here. So the Hondo Police Department is proud to announce Officer Francisco Lopez as the 2024 Officer of the Year. This honor recognizes Officer Lopez's exceptional dedication, exemplary work ethic, and unwavering commitment to serving our community. Officer Lopez stands out as a leader within the department, serving as a field training officer, and playing a critical role in mentoring and shaping the next generation of law enforcement officers. His ability to guide and inspire others is a testament to his professionalism and knowledge of policing. Throughout the year, Officer Lopez has demonstrated an unmatched level of energy and enthusiasm in his duties. Whether responding to calls, engaging with residents, or providing support to his fellow officers, his dedication to the safety and well-being of our community shines through. The Hondo Police Department extends its gratitude to Officer Francisco Lopez for his commitment to excellence and for embodying the values of our department. Please join me in congratulating Officer Lopez and the school disorder recognition. And I have a plaque for him, but I left it at the office because I was dealing with something just prior to being here, and Assistant Chief Garza is freaking up right now. So, he'll get it here in a second. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Officer Lopez.
Oh, no, I have a speech.
No speech? No speech? Item number seven, present the comprehensive plan 2040 steering committee members, Mr.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Happy New Year once again. Yeah, I'm here to present the members of the state steering committee to help us in the process, in the comprehensive plan process. We have a, we are constituting a nine-member committee, but at this time, we have only eight people. It's been a chore sort of getting the nine members together, because some people, you invite them, they decline, they want to come, they decline, so it's been hit and miss, but finally, we have eight. Eight is a good enough number. If we get a nine percent, if we get a nine percent, I'll bring them to you, but now they are here. The paper I shared, I listed them, they were carefully chosen, too, because the comprehensive plan is basically a planning and zoning function, because it is the planning and zoning that produces the plan, even though we, we in development services will do it, but it is applying and zoning, it is in the arremis to produce the plan. So we have a member representing planning and zoning, and that is Makena Lengue. You can come up, you can come up. And then we have Kevin Gear, the second, presenting the business community, developer. We also have Ashley English. And then Ms. Billy Burr. She represents the hospital district as well. Cariza Gonzalez, I don't know whether she's here. Then Rosemary Mar.
She's somewhere else tonight.
From the school district, okay. She said she was going to come. And then Mr. Hook, David Hook. So he is the council, because I'm presenting to the council, yes. So, as you can see, this is a mixed grill. We have the young, we have the not-too-young.
Seasons.
We have senior, the senior citizens, you know, actively working, retired, all sorts. Okay. So, but here they are, Mayor, here they are, Council.
And I appreciate the fact that this is so representative of many different parts of our community, and appreciate y'all's willingness to serve. And Roseanne, would you like to get a picture of them with Mr. Atiosa right quick?
Thank you. Thank you.
If we could get y'all to stand here in front. Thank you so much. We look forward to the work that's going to be done. So I'll stand up. Is anyone taking a picture?
We should get each other, please. If you don't mind, I can have two of us. Stand.
You want to stand? Stand right here. Picture. Picture.
Just in case. We'll pick the best one.
And we have, Assistant Chief Garza has arrived with the plaque, so I'm going to ask if we could make that presentation and get a picture as well.
Freshly made?
Yeah. Yeah. You'll come down there?
Yeah.
We can stand behind. We can stand behind. are here tonight, and without our committed staff. I am teased often, "Well, John, are you running the city?" And I'm likely to say, "No, it's running me," and then I'll quickly say, "Ain't my job. We got professionals to do that, and we do appreciate them." Moving on, our consent agenda consists of items eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. It's self-explanatory, we've had a chance to look over it. Unless there's objection or any part of the council wants to pull one of these items, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So, I have a motion from Mr. Villa and a second from Mr. Etwarte. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by the same side? Here, no opposition, motion carries. Item 13, present, discuss, and consider action on Medina County Central Appraisal District's purchase and renovation of the Ridge Building at 728 18th Street, Hondo, Texas. Ms. Dixon and Mr. Jacobs.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Jody Jacobs, I'm the vice chair on the Medina County Appraisal District Board, Jeanette Dixon. You want to introduce yourself?
I'm Jeanette Dixon, Chief Appraiser for Medina County.
So, do they have a copy of this?
They have it.
Okay. You should have a copy of our presentation there in your packet, if you would like, you can follow along with me. So I'll just, I'll cut to the chase. The reason we're here is it is past time for the Medina County Appraisal District to find a new home, okay? And I'm going to go through this presentation, just kind of explaining why and where we're at in the process, and the main, so I represent the City of Hondo and Hondo ASD, my board's member spot does, and that's why I'm here talking to you guys, and if you have any questions, please stop me at any time and ask, and if I don't have the answer, I will sure get a phone to you. So Medina County Board members, you can, we got Cynthia Malone, the chairperson, as I said, I'm the vice chair, Cindy Segovia from the Lidl area, Secretary Mamie Navarro from the Lidl Natalia area as well, and then Melissa Lutz is our tax successor, and we do have one vacant spot on the board, which we're currently trying to fill. Next page, Medina County Growth. I would say these are very conservative numbers, but the 2020 population in Medina County was 51,584, and the expected population in '25, that's what I'm considering a very conservative number with the explosion in growth, it seems, to our east of 55,937. We've got an estimation of 500 to 800 homes being added annually. Currently, Medina County Appraisal District has 11 employees, and we will need to add two more, which I think is another conservative number by 2030 to keep up with the demand of our job and the workspace. Our current, next page, our current space is 1410 Avenue K. I would have assumed that most of you have been there at one time or another. We've been there since the inception of, or the formation of the Medina County Appraisal District. That's 1981, we've been in that space, and so, we occupy the north half of that building or north portion of it, and then the tax collector is, they've been in the south portion, southern portion of that building. the tax collector has, they've been in the south portion, southern portion of that building. The main reason we're looking for a new space is the Medina County owns that building, and they've expressed that it's time for us to go. So, we're informally being evicted. The tax collector has relocated to the old Community National Bank building. They're in the process of. Once they're out of there, the county does not plan on putting anybody back in their space, and they have future plans. I don't know exactly what that is specifically for that space, but they have, Judge Lutz has told us it's time to, it's time to find something different. I will tell you that I've been on the board for several years, and this has been an agenda item for our board to consider for years. We've looked at numerous spaces and have yet to move on any of those one spaces, but we didn't have the sense of urgency that we do now in needing to find another space. Currently, we're paying $3,500 a month in rent to the county. The office is too small for our needs. There's no hearing room space in there by hearing room. Whenever the public comes to protest their taxes, they go between, or, excuse me, in front of the...
Appraisal Review Board.
Appraisal Review Board. And so, we need a sufficient boardroom space to conduct those operations. And then, the bathrooms, I mean, it's, you basically have to walk into somebody's office to get to the restroom. And then, we do have a rodent problem, which is going to continue to grow. Once the tax collector has moved out of that space, we're going to have a lot of open space in there, and if there's nobody there, the rodents will be there. And then, there at the bottom, we do have an informal notice of eviction from Medina County. At this point, they haven't given us a hard deadline on when we need to get out of there, but as a board member, I don't want to be responsible for the appraisal district working out of their homes. And so, we need to get something going on that. We have located a space that we do have under contract. Next page there. It is at a, it's actually the strip center that is at 726 18th Street, fronts of railroad tracks. Currently, there is a dry cleaners there. There used to be a, the Medina County...
The Medina Health.
Medina Health Clinic was there, which they've since moved out. So, that place was not formally on the market. We looked at it originally to lease. The owner came back to us and expressed interest in selling. So, we do have it under contract right now, and we in our, we are in our feasibility study So, we're under contract. And the way the process works is we have to go in front of all of our taxing entities, City of Hondo being one of them, and seek approval from you guys and receive that approval. Actually, we have to receive approval of up to, it has to be three-quarters of our taxing entities, okay? So, next page, the third-party financing. We have contacted three local banks, got some competitive rates. They're, we're looking at like a 20-year term, and with the proposed rates that we have, we're expecting a monthly payment of about $10,000 a month. It's going to cost the City of Hondo about $2,590 a month, which would be a net increase...
Oh, that's annual?
Okay. Which would be a net increase of $1,683.63, give or take.
The annual, I'm sorry, say the annual again.
Yes, so the annual, I'm sorry, I don't have it in my notes here, but the annual is $2,590 that it would cost you guys as your percentage of our budget, excuse me, which would be a net increase of about $1,700. And a net increase there to us of $6,500 a month. Again, these are all kind of budgeted figures. Once we have a hard number, we're going to get that in front of you guys for the ultimate approval. So, the next page, taxing entity approval, just kind of gives a timeline of the steps that we have to take in order to make this happen. January 31, the Medina County Appraisal District Board directives to propose a resolution for property transaction. I do have a draft of that transaction, which you might have that in your packet. If not, I have a copy for each of you. February 1, Chief Appraiser notified taxing entities of proposed purchase and cost analysis. So, we'll have hard numbers in hand by then. And then, February 28 will be the estimated date of approval of resolution by the taxing entities before would be great. And closing date is currently March 15, and then, we would finalize our construction loan. That March 15 date to finalize a construction loan might be kind of premature because we would still have to get bids from contractors, get a hard number, and select a contractor. And then, permanent loan finalized and shooting for an estimated date of completion of construction of September of '26. So, let me back up a little bit. We have the building under contract, and then, as a part of our budget number, we're planning on going into that space and actually remodeling the space that we need to suit us, okay? So, we're going to go in there. Currently, 5,000 plus or minus square foot of that building is finished out into office space. It doesn't need paying floor, for sure. But then, we would like to go in there and move some walls to make it accommodate our purpose. So, increasing the size of the boardroom, working on some offices, enlarging a few of those, and just getting it to where it will suit the Medina County Appraisal District Board for years to come, or not the board, but the Medina County Appraisal District and Jonette and her employees for years to come. I will say that we, or I mentioned before, we have looked at numerous spaces and properties, one of them being owned by the City of Hondo out on their base there. With our estimates, we just feel like this, buying this space and putting the money into it that we need to make it work for us is going to be more cost-effective. And the schedule, the schedule will be, it'll be a quicker schedule to get it done. So, go ahead.
I have a question. So, just on the money part of it, it's going to be $10,000 a month, $120,000 a year for principal and interest, and our portion is only $2590 for the year?
Yeah. Because you only pay into our budget right now...
You pay 2.1...
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, 2.1585% of our annual budget is what you pay.
And then, what about the cost, the renovation cost? Is that going to, is that going to add to that number?
No, so that's...
Is that in the 1.2 million?
I didn't see those numbers in there unless I skipped over them accidentally. And I will say, thank you for your patience. You're the first one of these presentations that I've had to give. So, we're estimating a turnkey number of about 1.6 million.
Okay.
Right.
Yes. So, the 10,000, that's the principal interest on 1.6 million or 1.2 million?
We do have money in the bank for a down payment.
Okay.
Over the years, we have created a building fund, and I was not a part of the board whenever that happened, but every year, that building fund's been growing just a little bit with some surplus that we've had because we have been, we have been in search of a new place, okay? And so, by saving that money up, we're going to have money for a down payment. Right now, that's at about $500,000, give or take. So, that's what those numbers are based on.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
And I have a question too, and it has to do with money. I kind of have an idea, but for the public's information, could you kind of share how the appraisal district is funded?
So, we have 26 entities that we work for. So, our budget is then divided by each of those 26 entities based on their percentage of total levy. So, each entity, we add their total levy, it comes up with a number. We divide that by the number of entities that comes up with the percentage. Like I said, yours is 2.15% of our total budget is what you pay. And we have some entities that pay up to 35, 36%, but one of the smaller ones that pay. But it's divided amongst all of the entities based on their tax levy, which is the amount of taxes that y'all get throughout the year.
Yeah, I wanted to have that out so people understand how this works.
And I do have a copy, this is public knowledge, Chris.
Yes.
I do have a copy of all of the entities and what their percentage of the, our budget is, if y'all are curious to see that.
So, my next question is, at this point in time, what action would you be seeking from us?
So, at this, at this point in time, I would, I would ask that the board or the council take action to approve the mayor to sign our resolution once it's drafted. And the reason being, it's time-sensitive, the way that the laws are written for an appraisal district to go out and purchase a piece of property, it's time-sensitive in that we have to have, we have 30 days, correct? 30 days from the time we have our resolution drafted and signed by all taxing entities to close on that property. Well, in the real estate world, for us to go out and get a property under contract and do our due diligence like we need to, and go to the bank and do all the inspections, all that good stuff, it takes a lot longer than that. So, so, for this to happen, we would ask that you, that you approve the mayor to sign our resolution once we get you the resolution.
So, y'all need to take action on that, because you guys are still finalizing the numbers, right? So, then, that resolution will be given to the city prior to the next meeting?
Right, we have another meeting in January, and that will be within your 30 days.
That was the plan when I did the agenda, was that we put the resolution in like a consent agenda next week.
Yeah.
This was kind of just...
So, we have 30 weeks.
See what was going on, and then, we got the resolution to sign it next meeting.
Because they're still calculating the numbers, right?
We are.
Well, and they, the board hasn't passed a resolution yet either.
Okay.
It's been February meetings.
Right, it'd be into February.
Right.
Which will be the 20th.
Council, any other questions while they're here? No. It's great. Thank you for your presentation, and I sense that we will be supportive of the resolution.
Okay, well, so, and I appreciate your time and consideration, so.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, John.
The paneling in their current building is from the 80s, so it was pretty bad.
I was in there not too long ago.
Going to come back and stop.
Yeah, come back around.
Item number 14. Discuss and consider action on authorizing the purchase of a 2025 Ford Police Interceptor SUV. Chief Sosa.
Can we approve? Motion approved.
I approve.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, I have two different purchases before you tonight. This first one is fully, is going to be fully funded through our Operation Lone Star grant, in which we were awarded $393,663.92. The total vehicle purchase is going to be $75,908.29. And again, all of these funds have been awarded through a grant, and they're already available to us to spend.
Do I hear a motion to approve item 14? Oh, my. Slow down, guys.
It's a 2025 Ford Explorer.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Williams, and I'll take a second from Mr. Villa. Mr. Villa, you have a question?
He already answered it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
I just want to know what kind of vehicle it was. He said it was a Ford Explorer.
Right, and that's pretty much what all of our vehicles are, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by the same sign. Here are no opposition. Motion carries. Item number 15. Discuss and consider action on authorizing the purchase of a 2025 Ford Police Interceptor SUV for K-9 transport.
Okay. So, this is going to be a grant award that we were awarded by the Office of the Governor of Criminal Justice Assistance Grant in the amount of $75,000 to purchase 2025 Ford Explorer. The total for our, excuse me, for our K-9 transport, the total for this vehicle, including the in-car camera system, is $81,703.76. I want to explain the difference in the price. One is going to be the K-9 housing, costs a lot more to put that in, in lieu of, it's not in the other vehicle. So, we're in the negative, or basically, we need $6,703.76. Out of that, I, we have recently received insurance proceeds that will cover this, that we can do in a budget amendment later, but I just want to get y'all's approval to go ahead and purchase that now, as well as I'll be exploring additional options to see if the camera equipment can be purchased from our Lone Star grant as well, because this is going into our K-9 unit.
Right.
So...
Go ahead.
$6,703.76, that'll be covered by your Lone Star program?
I have to see, I have to submit a budget amendment to that grant funding opportunity, and if approved, yes. If not, those funds would be used from insurance proceeds that we've received.
Because in that award of $393,000, you're going to have an excess of over $325,000, so, happily and always, I mean, you have the money there, but you still have to ask for an amendment from them?
Yes. Because, so that, that additional funds, those have all been allocated to different line items to overtime, vehicle maintenance, ATV, trailer for the ATV, a gas tank scope, and some other equipment that we have asked for, but it has to fall within the specific guidelines of that grant funding opportunity. Anything outside of the scope of that funding opportunity would not be approved. And I don't want to start spending money that's not approved yet, because I don't want to get in trouble.
So, if you don't get the $6,703, that's going to come from your budget?
From, well, it would not come from my budget. Ideally, it would come from insurance proceeds that we recently received.
Which is in your general fund, right?
Correct.
It comes from the general fund.
So, we would have an amendment at that time?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I have another question. Does this, I know years fly faster than I think they do, but does this replace our existing K-9, or will we have two?
So, our existing K-9 is currently not in service. It hit a hog, and it's not, that's where the insurance proceeds are coming from.
Okay.
Because that, they, because of the vehicle's age and excessive miles, they opted to pay the vehicle, or give us basically a cash option in lieu of actually fixing the vehicle because it wasn't worth the money.
So, we need this?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions or discussion? No.
I'd like to make a motion there.
Okay.
Authorize the Chief of Police to purchase the 2025 Ford Police Interceptor SUV for K-9 transport with in-car camera system in the amount of $81,703.76.
Do I hear a second? I have a second. A motion from Mr. Etwarte, and a second from Ms. Ramirez. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by the same sign. Here are no opposition. Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item 16. Discuss and consider action on authorizing the purchase of shelving for three areas at the Hondo Public Library. Ms. Purcell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, the library received a grant from Family Place to create a space for our younger children, which was not done when the library was originally built. This is for our children under age five, and in remodeling to make that place, the shelving that is in that area is the five-tier high shelving, too high for those children. So, there are seven sections of shelves there that we need shorter shelving, the three tiers. And by moving the junior and young adult materials out into the main floor, we need eight sections of three-tier shelving for their materials. Since we're doing those, we thought we would take the opportunity at the same time to do the three sections of shelving we need for our Spanish collection, which are currently housed on a couple of carts. So, we're asking for a little over $16,000 to purchase this new shelving to make the library more efficient for the children and for our other patrons.
And the funding is anticipated well?
It would need to be a budget amendment. When we do budget amendments, we received a grant after budget season last year, so I couldn't put it in my furniture budget at that time.
Elsie, can you clarify, the amount received will cover the cost of the shelves, or will we have to have additional monies from the general fund?
This money would be needing to come from the general fund in a budget amendment. As I said, we weren't able to put it into our original budget. The grant covered all the educational toys for this area, but it didn't cover any physical items like shelving.
Do we amend it?
And I don't have the exact... And I don't have the exact number.
16,765.
Huh?
$16,765, is that what you said?
Yes.
So this grant, John, can you run this by me again? Family, the library received a grant?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
The library, I've got to tell you, the library received a grant, and it covered the majority of the project. However, the, the amount of funds would not cover the needed shelves. So Elsie has come to the council asking, obviously, there's a need for this, this type of shelving because the toddlers, obviously, we can't have the six-tier shelves. So to, to bring the three-tier, she would need this amount from the general fund.
Before we filled the budget for this year, you didn't know about this? Or were you expecting the grant to take care of this?
No, we did not receive the grant until after budget had already been done and approved. And then as we were putting the other materials in and doing the remodel that we needed to make that work, that's when we discovered we needed the shelves. So it was too late to go into the budget cycle.
I believe it took a little bit of extra time to get the bids, too, all three bids?
Yes. It's difficult to find companies that want to do just a small section. Most of the companies are trying to do entire libraries at once, and so we had a little difficulty in getting the third bid. I had a bid from a local company out of Universal City that I got back in June, right after budget and right after we found out we were getting the grant. But the other two companies, it took me until just last month to finally get a final bid from them.
I have another question. May I?
Sorry, go ahead.
The quote that I'm, that's in our packet, Elsie and John, the quote is only valid through October 25 of last year. It is January 2025. So are we going to fly with this $16,765, or is this UR Inc. going to tell us, "Yo, it's $8,000 more"? I would have loved for us to get a current quote, since it's out of budget. I mean, it's going to require a budget amendment.
Good question.
JR Inc., I had spoken with them. They did not send me a new quote, but I had spoken with them earlier, and they said that there should not be any change in the quoted price. If I need to, I can go back to them and come back at the next council meeting.
Does our action tonight need to have the exact amount?
We'll be doing a budget amendment at a later date.
Yeah.
But the approval itself, you could probably say up to a certain amount.
Yeah, it can be up to not to exceed a certain amount, and then whatever's not spent is not spent. But typically, for motions for purchases, I would like to have some kind of amount in the motion.
Well, the staff recommendation there reads the quotes range from $16,765 to $22,486.1. And it also states, "The Hondo Public Library is requesting the amount of the lowest quote." We are limiting ourselves, John, to what we can do for Elsie and the library if we go with this writing.
Well, you could still, you can say up to.
Yeah, and she said, she's already gotten a verbal from them that they were good with the quote. So we just say, we just say that price, and then if it comes, if it doesn't work, then come back.
Or we could say up to 18.
Where's, where's this money coming from, the general fund or...
This would come from the general fund, yes, sir. From fund balance.
And it's available?
Yes, sir.
Let's just do the motion the way it is. I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
To approve the purchase of library appropriate shelving for the Family Place Library area, the junior, young, adult area, and the Spanish collection in the amount of $16,765.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Motion from Mr. Williams and a second from Mr. Etwarte. Any further discussion or question?
And then if it's more than that, she's going to have to come back and get another amendment.
Yeah, but...
Yeah.
We're amending now, and then if it's more, we're going to have...
Actually, actually, we're authorizing, the amendment will come later.
The budget amendment will come later. We're authorizing the...
We're not, we're not amending the budget right now.
No.
No, sir.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by the same sign. Hear no opposition, motion carries.
Thank you, Council.
I have a motion from Mr. Villa to adjourn.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Williams. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by the same sign. Hear none. We are adjourned at 6:46.
Got the best counsel ever, you know.